6:00 PM Council Chambers, Council Chambers at 111 East Maple Avenue. So, Mr. City Manager, I would typically turn it over to you, but Chief Laus has asked to have the opportunity to have a moment of personal privilege because this is his, well, second to last week. Is that right? Almost?
Yes, sir.
I'll let you explain that. So Chief, please proceed.
Yeah, this is my last opportunity to officially be here in front of you. So I just wanted to take an opportunity, if I could, please, thank you very much for the opportunity to address you tonight. And moreover, thank you for the opportunity that you've allowed me to serve here for the last year. This has been a tremendous opportunity, and I just wanted to take the, take a moment to say a few thank yous, if I could, please. Council, Mayor, thank you so much for allowing me to be here and allowing me to serve here in Independence. I greatly appreciate that. From the City Manager and the City Manager's office, I greatly appreciate the faith that they had in bringing me here. From the first interview that I had with Sam Morris to the final interview that I had with Zach Walker, was a pleasure. There was nothing tough about it, and for that, I greatly appreciate. I appreciate their leadership, the ability and faith that they had to just say, you know what, go do your job. And for that leadership, I will forever be grateful. And for the opportunities that we've been given in this past year to get a lot of things done. So to that, I greatly appreciate. To the leadership team, what a great leadership team this city has. The collaboration, the cooperation, the strong bonds that this leadership team has. I've heard before that when things start to get tough and the water starts drying up, the animals start looking at each other differently. Not so much here. And that's, that is a beautiful thing, quite a testament to the leadership and the leader of this leadership team as we move forward in the future here. The networking that they have is something to be very, very proud of as the leaders here. The great Independence Fire Department, I could talk for hours. This is a great, great department. I've been here, been in this business for coming up 37 years, and I have to say that I can say I'm finishing on top, that this has been an absolute blast serving with this group. We've had our ups, we've had our downs, we've had our difficult times, and we've had our struggles moving forward. But we've done it together, and we've, we've come together and served together. And for that, again, you can be very, very proud. They're a very aggressive, in a safe way, but very aggressive department in getting the job done and serving this community. Our firefighters, as I mentioned before, very motivated, very dedicated, and very disciplined. Finally, to my wife, she is here in town with me. We will be selling, celebrating 44 honeymoons this year. And without her strength, her dedication, and support through this last year, this could probably have been a lot more difficult. But it has been a wonderful, wonderful year, and I've been blessed, for sure. I thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. And we appreciate you, and we thank you for filling in for us as we are making the transition to a new chief, so I cannot say thank you enough for your time and effort. I'm also going to turn it over to our City Manager to see if you'd have any closing thoughts that you would like to share, and I certainly would be happy to provide opportunities for our council members, too. So, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would be remiss if I didn't publicly acknowledge the work that Chief Laus has done for us. When we spoke to him, we asked that he would come to our community for a few months to help with the transition from Chief Short to the next chief, and a few months has turned into a full year of service to our community. And it wasn't just keeping a seat warm. The chief really worked closely with his leadership team, with the leadership in IAFF Local 781, to make sure important initiatives were moved forward. Issues continued to be sorted out. Chief made himself a part of this community and really set the bar for all of us about what strong leadership looks like. The only time I questioned his judgment was when he rooted for the Miami Dolphins against the Chiefs in the playoffs, but I attribute that to the cold weather that had him not thinking straight. Other than that, he's been a great leader for us, and he will be missed, and the mark he left on this community will forever be here.
Thank you. Any other council members like to chime in? Just thumbs up. All right, very good. Chief, thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, I appreciate that. Thank you. And the next item up, Mr. City Manager may have you to this, is a council-sponsored item, trash hauler caps sponsored by Councilmember Stewart. I don't know if you would like to lead it or have Councilmember Stewart?
I wished I had a great transition from Chief Laus to trash, but I don't. So I'm going to just go ahead and defer to Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just pretty simply put, it's, it's a, it's a cap that would limit trash haulers to eight for every 15,500 residents. And I'm gonna have, the current ordinance doesn't have it, but I'm gonna have the City Manager revise that a little bit and basically put a clause in there that if our population would drop for some reason, hopefully it doesn't, that any current trash hauler would still get to keep their license unless they voluntarily give it up. But, so we wouldn't have any more than eight unless our population rose by another 15,500. And if there's any thoughts on it, I'd love to hear. So, that's all. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
So, just my reaction to that, my observation would be is that I'm not sure we need that many. Eight seems like a lot to me. And, you know, I would be more comfortable, frankly, with about four. But, but I do know, you know, that it's a, it's an important issue and a hot issue to some degree or another. So I'd be, I'd be in favor of reducing it and just saying, you know, let it, as companies leave or go out of business or whatever, then we, they would, I mean, we would grandfather them in, but, you know, the way we're currently are, but then reducing it even more. But, but certainly capping it is a step in the right direction, in my view. So that's just my reaction.
Anyone else have further discussions? All right, seeing none, and we could have citizens' requests at this time, but we don't have any citizens' requests that want to talk about this topic. So that'll take us on to the next presentation, and this is the employee insurance update. Mr. City Manager, bring us updated on this, and how do we proceed on this one?
Yes, I am going to ask tonight's presenter, Jonathan Crass from CBIZ, the city's health insurance advisory firm, to come forward and make this presentation. As he's making his way forward, I will remind the council at your last meeting, the council gave approval to the renewal of the plan for our retirees who are Medicare eligible. What you're going to hear tonight is the city's recommendation for insurance for active employees and our retirees not yet Medicare eligible. So this item will appear on the council agenda on your August 5th meeting, but in advance of that, and given the importance and complexity of the issue, we wanted to make sure you had a thorough understanding of it. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Crass.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Jonathan Crass. I am from CBIZ Employee Benefits here in Kansas City, and I'm pleased today to present the results of the work that we've been doing over the past several months with the Staywell Benefits Committee and other members regarding the employees, the employee benefits for options for 2025. So, a lot of words on this page, but essentially, the city currently offers a package of medical, dental, vision, and other associated health and welfare programs through Cigna to eligible employees, retirees, and their families. City's been in a five-year contract with Cigna that prohibited the marketing of the Cigna-administered products through the 2024 plan year, which is this year. So this means that for next year is the first time we've been able to take a look at and compare market options for, for these benefit programs. Through the city's procurement department, we distributed a request for proposal, an RFP, to the local and national market for the city's benefit programs for coverage to begin on January 1st. We invited some vendors to respond, and some vendors elected to respond after finding the public bid online. We aggregated the responses presented to a subgroup of the Staywell Committee, including active and retiree members plus HR and administration, over the course of three work sessions through April and May. Some vendors were selected as finalists and delivered presentations to the subgroup in May. So, that's high level of how we got here. Let's take a look at the biggest piece first, which is the active and pre-65 medical. Cigna is the incumbent, as mentioned. They provided a quote or response to the proposal. Blue Cross of Kansas City also provided a response. Both Aetna and United Healthcare were invited to respond, but they were unable to provide a timely proposal. Therefore, we had finalist meetings from Cigna and Blue Cross of Kansas City. The, the active and pre-65 health insurance program is a self-funded plan. I know we've had discussions over the years about that plan itself, and so the way that a self-funded plan is marketed is slightly different from a fully insured plan. Without getting too technical, basically, there are two pieces. One is the third-party administrator, and the other is the claims repricing, or the, essentially the cost of the program. The third-party administrator asks, how much would it cost for carrier A to run the claims administration of the plan? And the repricing says, if our claim, the claims that the plan had in prior years were paid by carrier A instead of the current carrier, how much would it cost? So basically, taking prior year's claims, fast-forwarding, fast-forwarding them to next year and saying, how much would you charge for all these claims? The Staywell Plan is roughly a $20 million plan, so it's a, it's a pretty sizable expense, and that's, that's total cost made up of, of employee contributions, retiree contributions, and city funds. A lot of numbers on this page, but basically, this looks at a two-year total sum of projected costs for both Cigna and the current state, as well as their proposal for next year, the Blue Cross of Kansas City proposal, and then the Blue Cross National Alliance proposal. Essentially, the same, Blue Cross and National Alliance have the same network, but National Alliance allows the ability to plug and play with additional vendors and unbundle the plan more, bring on different components of the plan more easy, or easier than the local Blue Cross does. The light blue line there, about three quarters of the way down, shows the projected total for two years, for '25 and '26. The current program, about 36.1. The proposal from Cigna at 35.8, I'm sorry, 35.6. Local Blue Cross at 32.9, just shy of 33, and then Blue Cross National Alliance at 34.6 million total. So still, and this is medical claims and pharmacy, as well as the administrative fees. This doesn't include stop-loss premium or any other additional fees. So, potential savings, or projected savings by the proposal from Cigna and the potential to move to one of the two Blue Cross options. Through the, through the review and several rounds of negotiation with all the carriers, the respondents on the committee put together their responses. They scored on five categories out of a total of 20 points apiece. Those are the three active members of the RFP Subcommittee plus representation from HR and administration, and they were judged on responsiveness to the RFP proposals, pricing, plan design match, value-added programs, and network access. There were maximum 20 points per category, and in a nail-biter, Cigna, the incumbent, had an average score of 91 points, and Blue Cross had an average score of 90. So Cigna had a slight advantage in the scoring. As you can see, scores were varied in, from around 80 up to the high 90s for both carriers. When we had the scorecards from the members of the committee, we asked them not just to provide the numbers, but also some written feedback, some commentary about why they were, they were choosing the way they were. And there were pros and cons for both of the medical carriers. Cigna, obviously being the incumbent, had a lot of favoritism from, for just being around for a while, and people used to the plan and the way the network works. The network was, is, is very favorable to the employees and their families. Cigna, the Staywell Committee has promoted the Local Plus Network, which is a plan that focuses on the HCA network, which gets a lot of utilization through our plan. And it provides, to renew, Cigna provides the least amount of disruption for members, though the committee did acknowledge that the pricing for Cigna was not as competitive as the other bidders, but still right in line essentially with their current costs. Again, least amount of disruption. They have new programs that they've talked about through their presentations and through our annual review meetings to help assist with chronic conditions and high-cost claimants. They've been a good partner for the years while helping to improve the health and wellness of our members and their families. Lot of words here on Blue Cross. Pricing was, was very competitive. Plan design, plan design was very competitive. Blue Cross did have a, a smaller network as well, focusing on their Spire Care facilities, which are almost, almost like an old-fashioned doctor's office where you get full health care all in one. There's behavioral health and some other programs that are involved in, in one visit. And that plan has its own smaller network associated with it. I think the one drawback that the committee acknowledged was the hospitals on that plan were not any of the better local hospitals. So Center Point being the local, better local one on the Cigna plan was not included in this smaller network plan on the Blue Cross option. There was some disruption on the pharmacy. Blue Cross did have a higher admin cost, and, but there, that was offset by their improved cost on the, improved projected cost on the claim repricing and the pharmacy. So, in summary, both carriers were very good to work with. They're very responsive. They provided everything that was asked of them. They're in a very timely fashion. Cigna matched the proposal, matched the requested plan design and network perfectly, as they're the incumbent with the OAP network and the Local Plus. Blue Cross offered a similar, similar select network with, to the Local Plus, but the Spire Care is a complete change from where the members are right now. The members that are using the Local Plus network through the HCA hospitals. So there would be some disruption there with, with that switch from the Local Plus plan. The recommendation was, we acknowledge that there are some, some potential cost advantages to Blue Cross, but from a member satisfaction standpoint and member disruption, that the plan would be better, would be best fit by remaining with Cigna for next year for the self-funded medical and active pre-65 plans with Cigna. Questions? Moving on to dental. Again, the, the medical RFP, we had a larger selection of carriers to respond to this one. Cigna, being the incumbent on the dental program, did quote, of course. We also received quotes from Ameritas, Blue Cross of Kansas City, Delta Dental of Missouri, MetLife, Sun Life, United Healthcare, Aetna, Guardian, and Mutual of Omaha declined to respond to the dental portion of the, of the RFP. Again, respondents were scored. Similarly to medical, this one only had four categories: responsiveness, pricing, I'm sorry, five. responsiveness, pricing, plan design match, program enhancements, and network access. Scores varied here from low 70s to the upper 80s. Cigna received an 81, and MetLife received an 88. Those were the two finalists that we had present. Most all of the carriers, with the exception of Blue Cross of Kansas City, showed a projected savings on the fully insured premium for the dental programs. MetLife had over $109,000 in projected savings, 10% discounted premium. Again, lots of words, words here. MetLife has had, was rated as one of the largest networks, had lower premium. They had some plan enhancements, including annual maximum and network match. They also are offering covers, coverage for implants. They provide onsite dental exams, and the discounts are the, are exceeding the national average by over 1%. So overall, MetLife was the pick by, from the committee, and the recommendation is to move the dental coverage to MetLife for 2025. Vision, pretty similar. A lot of the dental carriers also provide coverage for vision. So we received proposals here from Cigna as the incumbent, Ameritas, Blue Cross, Delta Dental of Missouri, IMED, Sun Life, Assurancy Vision, and United Healthcare. Aetna, Guardian, Mutual of Omaha, Vision Benefits of America declined to provide a competitive proposal. We had finalist presentations from IMED and Cigna, and as a whole, IMED was the highest-rated carrier, and the recommendation is to move there for projected savings, and what, what the committee believes is better tools, better access, and that IMED is, all they do is vision. So it's, it's believed that, that their service, their programs, their platform built for vision programs and not, not anything else. That's what they do. They do vision. And so the decision is to move to, or recommendation is to move to IMED for next year. We also received proposals for, for flexible spending accounts. Flexible spending accounts are the pre-tax savings for medical and dental and vision expenses for people who are not on high deductible health plans. We received proposals from Cigna, the current administrator, as well as Flex Made Easy, MetLife, Assurancy, Task, Wex, and declines from Aetna, Blue Cross, and United Healthcare. Flex Made Easy and MetLife were selected as vendor finalists. So the, these proposals were scored on, on four categories: responsiveness, pricing, program enhancements, and member experience. Out of a total of 80, MetLife had the highest score at 60. Flex Made Easy was second at 56. And due to premium cost savings, this is a fixed cost paid completely by the, the city, the decision was made to move to MetLife for 2025 for flexible account, flexible spending account administration. On the health savings account, this is the pre-tax savings account for people who are on high deductible health plans. UMB is the incumbent, UMB the local bank. We received proposals from Assurancy, Task, Wex, Aetna, Blue Cross, and United Healthcare, all declining to propose. Respondents were scored based on responsiveness, pricing, program enhancements, and member experience. UMB received the highest score at 69 points. There was no finalist presentation for this benefit, as UMB has no cost for their administration. So it's a completely free, there's no, no fee to the, paid by the city for health savings accounts. So every other vendor represented an increase in cost and complete disruption for members. So this was almost a no-brainer to remain with, with UMB for, for next year. So in summary, the recommendation for the vendor panel for next year is medical for active pre-65 and then post-65 that we talked about last week, to remain with Cigna. The pharmacy program will also remain bundled with Cigna. Dental will move to MetLife. Vision will move to IMED. Flexible spending accounts will move to MetLife, and then health savings accounts will remain with UMB. We have a slew of supporting slides here, but this really gets into all the details of the proposals and probably way, way too much information for today's presentation.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the members? Please proceed.
Can you go back to your final slide on the Cigna health benefit?
Final slide on the Cigna health benefit?
So for the, the first section on, yeah.
This one?
No, the one that talks about the 3% accelerator.
Oh, okay.
Yep, right there.
This one.
And let me just be sure I understand that. I may have misread it. Blue Cross agreed to a fixed rate of 32 million, or how much?
Oh, so, I'm sorry. That is for the administrative fee. That is for, for, it is not for the claims piece. It is only for the per-employee-per-month fee that's paid by the city. So on this slide, Cigna's admin fee is projected at 689,507.
Okay.
Blue Cross is at 856,488. So that's, that's the amount that has the 3% escalator on Cigna and held on Blue Cross.
Okay, thank you.
It is not the giant piece that, that is the claims.
Okay, that means it's 38 million by year three, and, okay.
No, no.
Thank you. That helps me.
Absolutely.
Anyone else have other further questions? Please proceed.
Just to make sure I'm clear on, on that page, back to the page you were just on. So by, by staying with Cigna, you're estimating that we, over our current plan, we would, we're receiving roughly a half a million dollar decrease in cost?
Projected change from, from current over two years, yes.
Right. But if we move to Blue Cross, it would be roughly 3 million. And so what you're saying is that, may, I'll make sure I understand what you're saying. So what you're saying by that is that having a hospital here in town, not changing, you know, is worth another two and a half million dollars? Is that what I'm, I want to make sure, if, if I'm thinking of that in the right way?
That was, I mean, there were a number of other pieces. Mike, you want to come up and speak to that piece?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Michael Veat. I'm the Staywell Chair, and I sat through this RFP process with CBIZ along with some of the other committee members. This process was lengthy. To answer your count, to answer your question, Councilmember Fears, what we really looked at this process is that we have, over the last four years, have built a network with Cigna through our Local Plus Plan. When we originally looked at this plan and building this selected network about four years ago, we determined that about 65% of our membership was using the HCA network. So what Cigna did is they built a selected network. They went in and negotiated discounted rates. So that's why we see such a substantial savings on Local Plus. When we asked, when CBIZ asked for the bids and to compare apples to apples, Blue Cross came back with what is their Local Plus network, and it's called Spire Care. Now, Spire Care is separate from and designed. It does not encompass the HCA program like we have here for our local hospital and our local doctors' offices. So there, we anticipate that that estimated $3.1 million in savings is not actually true savings, because if you have members that are comfortable with their doctors or going through, that don't want to make that change from Local Plus to Spire Care because they would have to make an entire switch, then they will have to change doctors, which will in turn, or, excuse me, they will have to change plans to a PPO plan, which will, is a higher cost to the city. It's a higher cost to the employee, and then it's higher cost altogether because they don't have those negotiated rates. The other thing that we have to really look at is, is that Cigna has a bunch of plans that run in the background administratively. Our Motivate Me, which is our wellness platform that we use, that's saving our plan money. Their, Cigna's planning on changing that this year. The other part where we really look at this is on the pharmacy side. They have Savon RX, they have generic medications. All of these Savon RX, they have generic medications. All of these programs run in the background currently with Cigna to help drive our costs down. With us having to change carriers and go to Blue Cross and Blue Shield, that would be a complete disruption all the way across the board. So the committee felt that, that three point one eight million dollars in savings is not a true estimated savings because we would have to rebuild all of this over the time. The thing that else we really looked at is, is where our Staywell plan is running right now. When you look at our financials, when you look at the healthcare plan versus the city fiscal year, healthcare is January one to December thirty-first, where the city's running July to June. When we looked at our fiscal, our financial report for May of 2024, and this is just a tidbit to throw at you, May one of 2023, the Staywell Fund was four hundred thousand dollars in the hole. Because of the changes that we've made with Cigna, we're driving our membership to these high deductible plans, which is a horrible term. It should be a consumer-driven plan. But May one of 2024, the Staywell Fund had made a two million dollar swing and showed one point four million, one point six million dollars ahead because of the savings and the changes that we've made over the last couple of years. It's finally starting to catch up and show that we're, that this plan is running successfully. And that was the major reason that we looked at the difference between the savings of five hundred and thirty thousand versus three point one million. Does that answer your questions?
That's very helpful, yeah.
I'll be happy to answer any other questions from the committee side of what we looked at as well.
Please proceed.
I have one question that's probably more directed to the city manager about the stop loss. So are we expecting big changes in the cost of the stop loss plan, or it should be reasonably stable?
Jonathan, do you want to add to that, please?
Sure. So, stop loss is a program that runs in background, like some of the programs Mike was speaking of. Stop loss is not member-facing whatsoever, so it's all on the administration side. And it's something that we market every year. So we have a practice within CBIZ where we look at the entire market of stop loss carriers. We have over, I think it's fifteen, seventeen markets that we go to each year to find the most competitive bid. Again, as something that is not member-facing, stop loss is a commodity. It can, it can be moved, can be moved on an annual basis and is only work on the administration side. So we received a pretty reasonable renewal last year and based on some of these improved claims that Mike was speaking of, at this point, it's tough to say, we don't have, stop loss won't quote until we get at least eight, eight to nine months in the year of claims for, for next year. But twenty to twenty-five percent is kind of a benchmark renewal for stop loss. But again, it can be moved. It's all dependent, also dependent on claims. Right now, we have one, one stop loss claim. So if we continue this way, I would expect it to be reasonable renewal again this year.
Thank you.
I did want to add one more piece about the, the entire concept of, of the marketing that we did this year. Every quote that we received is not a contract. So if, if necessary, we have the flexibility to move carriers. If we needed to look at this again for 2026, we could do the review again for, for any of the lines we spoke of prior. As I mentioned initially, the city was in a five-year con, contract, which was, we were beholden to Cigna for five years, but at this point, we are not, starting in 2025.
Thank you. Anyone else? Other questions? All right, I just wanted.
I did want to add one last thing. I received some kudos last week from, from Bob and Marla on the retiree committee, and I wanted to say it back to them and the entire group that worked on this whole process. This was a ton of work over the past several months. And the people who, the half a dozen people we had on the committee, plus Bethany from HR, were really wonderful and asked, asked a lot of great questions, especially somebody sitting over here to my left. But they really vetted the heck out of all the options, read the proposals in depth, in detail, asked some really wonderful questions, and really thought about the city dedicates to the entire healthcare program. And I, I don't think there's a bad decision up on any of these slides. I think everything was thoroughly thought through by everybody for a myriad of different reasons, both financial and member and disruption. And everyone really did a heck of a job through the process. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Anything else? And any closing comments, Mr. City Manager?
Just, again, a thank you to the committee. It'd be easy to look at the static numbers and see those savings and think we should have went one way, but they did the hard work of pulling back behind the numbers and understanding the implications. So I'm, I'm grateful to CBIZ and to our Staywell Advisory Committee for their work. And just a reminder, this will be before the council, your August fifth meeting for final consideration.
Great. Anyone else? All right. But I think, I just, from my perspective, and I hopefully can speak on behalf of the council, I love the fact that we've got employees involved with it. We've got retirees involved with it. We've got, and, and, and what I'm hearing is really good communication between everyone, and it was open and honest, and you felt involved, and your questions were answered, and that's the important, that's what we want. So, very, very good. Thank you very much for your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And if you can lead us into the next one on the charter amendment overview, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on August sixth, independent voters will have the opportunity to vote on five different questions regarding potential amendments to the city charter. Given the amount of time that has elapsed since the city's had a citizens' review committee, nearly forty years, given the amount of time the commission worked on this issue and the complexity of the issues they faced, we felt like it would be a benefit to our community to have one additional study session presentation to help clarify some of the more common questions or concerns that we have heard from the community. So the members of the Charter Commission held an open house again this evening from four to six, and now our Charter Commission Chairperson, Jackie Summer, is here to do an additional presentation for the community's benefit. So I will turn it over to Ms. Summer.
Thank you. I'm Jackie Summer. I live at three oh one oh South Bradford Lane, and I'm Chair of the Charter Review Commission. Thank you for letting me speak tonight, Mayor and council members. I'm going to make a presentation on the recommended charter amendments. Now, these recommended amendments were made both by the Charter Review Commission and the city council. I was not involved, of course, in the city council changes and additional recommendations. So when I come to that part of this presentation, I may ask either the city manager, the city councillor, Mr. Cover, to, you know, add to that when we get there. And if there's a legal issue that comes up, of course, that'll go to Mr. Cover or his associate, Ms. Klish. Also, please, if it's okay with the mayor, if you have questions while I'm presenting, I'm fine with taking those at that time. First part of my talk is going to be on the five ballot questions, and I want to again stress that the Charter Review Commission did not draft those ballot questions. We turned our recommendations over to the council. The council spent a lot of time looking at them, delving into them, trying to find the best way to word them in, I'm going to say as few ballot questions as possible considering the huge number of changes that we are asking for. So if there are questions about the ballot language, I really cannot answer those. So I would refer those, just defer those to someone else. We're also going to talk about some comments and objections that have come to our attention. I haven't seen them all. I was provided a list of those when we were creating this PowerPoint. So again, some of those I may not completely understand. I may also differ on those. I have a few of our Charter Review Commission members here tonight. Let me get to my list here. And I'm not good at clicking. I've warned people about that. I'm the chair, Tom Waters. The vice chair is here tonight, I believe. Mr. Waters, Les Boatwright, Bruce Frakes, Mark McDonald. And did I miss anyone? Thank you for coming tonight.
Ms. Summers, can you put the mic a little closer to your mouth?
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to click?
I'm not good at clicking. Thank you. So the Charter Review Commission, Commission was appointed at the end of 2022 with the exception of two of our members who were appointed by Councilmember McCandless when you took office, correct? But, and I believe they missed maybe the first meeting, but participated in all the other meetings we had. And so we began meeting in January of 2023, and we tried to meet twice a month for two hours at each meeting. And we went through the entire charter. Of course, I have it with me, this book, sixty-page book. And we went word by word through it. And not only did we spend that amount of time at our meetings, but the preparation for that was extensive. I know as chair, I spent at least a day or two before every meeting, going through it again, making notes. And I know my other, the other commission members did the same thing. So there were a lot of time we put into that. We, one of our goals was to reduce the size of the charter, which is larger than any other charters in this area, from sixty pages as much as we could without deleting anything that we believed, believed was necessary to be in it. And so our amended version when we were done was about thirty pages. So we reduced it by fifty percent. As resources, we relied a lot on city manager Walker. He attended every meeting. I believe there may be, had been one he wasn't there at. We had a representative there. Mr. Cover was there at almost every meeting or one of his associates. I believe the city prosecutor was there one night. We always had legal representation. And they were, we asked them questions that, they had, there's a lot of work ahead of them before each meeting. Lindsay Galman was our secretary and clerk for the commission. She was fabulous. She was on real-time making changes as we voted on them, then corrected them, and she was amazing. She did our agendas and organized our meetings for us. We also use the National Civic League Model City Charter mainly as our, as our main reference. It's been used nationwide for over a hundred years for cities that are forming charters and making changes and amending their charters. It's an excellent document. It's available, if you just Google it, you can find it online if anyone wants to look at it. We looked at other local charters, including Blue Springs, Lee Summit, and Kansas City. We, at the same time we were meeting, when we first began meeting, the Mayor's Advisory Commission on Ethics Reform was also meeting. And ethics is an entire article in the charter. I believe it's Article Five. So we kind of postponed working on that until they had finalized their work. And then the chair of that commission, Larry Blick, came and spoke to us so that, and gave us a copy of their recommendations, which we thought were excellent. We did not re, completely remove ethics from the charter. We had some wording that sort of was more refined that we left in, that I believe partially came from the model charter. And we made the decision to require that the city council, if this passes, adopt a code of ethics. We thought that was very important. And we still believe that's important. So we relied on some information that we got from the Commission on Ethics Reform. We heard from the Jackson County Election Board, and we heard from some citizens, and we were very pleased to hear from them. They all were very well-versed on what they were writing us about, and I was impressed. And we discussed those communications that we got. We also relied on state law. So some of our changes are just because we have to comply with state law and we wanted to incorporate that. Okay, so now I'm on, question one, I'm going to go over the ballot questions. And I'm just, this just summarizes what the ballot questions deal with because they are consolidated. They are not word for word the changes. There was no way to do that. So in question one, these are mostly not substantive changes that are basically throughout the charter, with the exception of maybe the last one. We wanted to look to the future. Actually, this should have happened a long time ago. But we wanted to make required legal notices available online on the city's website. State law hasn't been changed for years and years, and a lot of state law, of the state laws require publication of notices. Those are expensive to do. They're time-consuming, and they have to be done in a certain type of newspaper. We're lucky to have the Examiner here, and it is one of those newspapers. But a lot of other newspapers have shut down over the state. So we think that law may eventually change, and we want to be proactive and allow for elect, or publication on the website. I think it's still posted on the bulletin board out here at City Hall. So they're available a number of ways. But reading it in a newspaper is probably not the best way to give a good notice to the public. We removed an attachment to the charter that was a legal description of the city boundaries as of December thirty-first of nineteen seventy-five. I will tell you that I'm guessing that shortly after that was made a part of the charter, it was inaccurate. Because cities are regularly changing their boundaries through annexations, de-annexations, and detachments. So we felt like, and, and no other charter we saw had a legal description of the city boundaries. We felt like that was, because it just won't remain accurate, that that should be removed from the charter and kept as an official legal description, and hopefully that would be done somewhere in the city, probably at the city clerk's office. But that was our recommendation on why to remove that. It doesn't change anything. It doesn't change the boundaries. Those are created by recorded legal documents. So they do not change until the city annexes or de-annexes. We referenced some state statutes that would, would govern certain things that were in our charter. And so that they would comply with state statute, we may not have named the particular statute because we also know that those change all the time. But we know that we cannot, we can't do anything that's not allowed by statute. We made some grammatical changes. We used, we removed some phrases that were so outdated that none of us really understood what they meant. We renumbered as required, and we did, made some language corrections just for clarity and accuracy, but again, didn't substantively change anything in the charter. Now, the last thing that is included on question one in my discussion tonight, we are requiring mandatory charter review at least every seven years. That's a, that's a, the longest you can go. Charter reviews could be done, it would be difficult, but they probably could be done annually, but whenever they are needed. And we wanted to make that an option for the city and its citizens. We did think that the eleven-member group was an excellent number of people. It just worked very well for us. We didn't have trouble getting quorums. We had an absence. We allowed people to participate virtually, and we had excellent attendance with our eleven people. So we thought that was good to leave in the charter. And by making it more frequent review, we won't have this enormous ballot coverage and number of questions each time, if these pass. Okay, so question two, that amends Articles one, two, four, and five. In Article One, the Charter Review Commission recommended adding some public engagement language so that the city is directed to reach out to underrepresented communities. We felt that was very important. What we added to it was probably a little wordy, and so acting as the city council should, they looked at that and shortened it somewhat, but I think they kept you, kept the intent the way that the Charter Commission wanted. So we did appreciate that. Not take away anything from the citizens of Independence. It promotes equality, and we felt that was important. Also, we renamed the management analyst position to internal auditor, and I think we took out some of the, like, job duties that were in that. We, from our understanding and from hearing from the city, at times that position could be at times that position could be difficult to fill because of the language in the charter. And, and so that's why we made that change. And we allow the internal auditor to audit city departments as directed by the Audit and Finance Committee. This is kind of an important change that may not seem that way, but we added the allowance of official records to be stored electronically instead of by paper. So we're trying to move into current century and avoid destruction of paper documents through natural disasters or fires or that sort of thing. They're probably already kept electronically. We hope that they are, but we wanted to make sure that that was allowed in the charter. And then we added allowing the city to adopt standard technical codes for building, electric, or property maintenance. We, this, this is worded kind of strangely in this PowerPoint, but it says we require annual update of city code on city's website. I'm assuming that's pretty much, it's updated way more often than that, but we don't want it to not be updated less than one year. It needs to be as current as possible. People use that all the time. I know I do, I look at it constantly. So it's good to, to make sure that that's done on a regular basis. We, the City Council, I'm going to say we, but it includes some City Council changes, not done by the commission, removed the city residency requirements for municipal judges. We clarified the powers of the Ethics Board, and we did require that they be funded. I don't imagine that fund is going to be huge, but we do want to make sure that they have the assets that they have to operate as independently. We allowed for the potential future transfer of the municipal court to the circuit court only after a public hearing and a supermajority vote of the City Council, if desired. We do not advocate for that. We think we have a great municipal court system here. It's working as far as I know. But it may not always be financially a good idea for the county, for the city to continue to have its own municipal court. Again, I, we, we don't want that to change right now, and we are not advocating for that.
Excuse me?
Go ahead.
Councilwoman Bur McCallis has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There was a question earlier this evening about the budget for the Ethics Board, and I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified. That would go through the same budget process for the city that every other department, et cetera, would have to go through, it would still be approved by the City Council. I just wanted to be sure to clarify that.
Yeah, we mean, we didn't put a dollar amount in it. If the municipal court is transferred to circuit courts, and I have to say that that has done, and has been done in many municipal courts in Missouri after some Supreme Court decisions a few years ago. We do require that the city maintain its own city prosecutor who would prosecute those cases. Question three amends Articles Two, Three, Eight, Nine, and Ten. Excellent addition to this by the City Council that I am so grateful for is that if, if the city is considering the sale of a public utility, that that has to go to the voters of the citizens of Independence. That is not in the charter now. I think it's, it's an excellent addition. We also, the restricted budgetary transfers and loans from utilities to other departments of the cities. We made the decision to remove several administrative departments and their descriptions in favor of putting those in the city code of ordinances. A lot of them already are in the city code of ordinances. Most charters do not include departments, maybe a few, but not all of them. I know that that's a little controversial. The council made the decision to keep the police and fire departments in the charter. So, and again, I think that is a wonderful idea. And so I just want to say that, that city departments are really, are not dependent on being in the charter. The departments existed before there was a charter. Just because they're in the, they don't have to be in the charter to exist. I guess that's the point I'm trying to make. And having the ability to make changes to city organization by ordinance rather than by a change to the charter and a vote of the people, which is time-consuming and can't happen as quickly as the City Council can do that, that allows for innovation. It makes it more adaptive, flexible, efficient. The city can, can change as the, change city services as needed. And as technology changes and improves, it allows the city to reorganize and consolidate departments. And as an example I would give, that hasn't happened too long ago, is the creation of the Municipal Services Department. And I don't know if you want to speak further to that, but I just think that that apparently was something that really improved the services of the city. You want anything?
Oh, just quickly, I know you've got a lot of content to cover, Madam Chair. The merger of municipal services took three city departments, Public Works, Water Services, and Water Pollution Control. We have been able to consolidate several former director-level positions through retirements. All told, that consolidation has saved the city's general fund alone one and a half million dollars through the consolidation and elimination of positions, not to mention then the savings to the sewer and water funds as well. So those are the kind of efficiencies that can be achieved when, when we look at new ways of doing things.
We recommended removal of job descriptions that were in the charter that, again, another thing that really needs to be handled administratively with the city, with some council review, I'm sure. And they should, we thought they should be either in the city code of ordinances or maybe in the personnel rules or something like that. I don't know that job descriptions belong in a charter. I don't think that they do. And then it clarified provisions related to the issuance of bonds and notes. And I will say that I had, we had no input on that because none of us have any kind of expertise on bonds and notes. So Mr. Kovar was able to get some language by the city's expert bond legal counsel. Is that correct? So those changes were made by them.
Yeah, that's right. We utilized the city's bond counsel, Gilmore and Bell, to provide a review of that section. And that's where, that's where all the recommendations came from.
Yeah. We're grateful to them also. We removed provisions related to city officers and employees entering into contracts on behalf of the city in favor of adding that to the personnel manual or elsewhere. I know that that can cause some problems, but it also kind of makes, if departments can enter into their own contracts, it may make things run more smoothly. On the other hand, it can create problems. So we felt like that shouldn't be in the charter. It needs to be something that's dealt with by the City Council. And we did some rearrangement and reorganization. We removed Article Ten. When I say we removed it, we basically moved it to Article Eight and renamed that Financial Management. We did include some revisions of Ten, but a lot of them were duplicative. So that was sort of just made the charter a little more simplified. We removed the provisions regulating business licenses because the city's ability to require a business license is regulated by state law. And we added in a requirement for the council to approve financial policies to maintain the financial integrity of city government. Question four. That amends Articles Six, Seven, and Thirteen. We took out the examples of election forms that were in the charter. They're really not needed there. They were outdated. The forms will still be available if you're still using them, and they, I believe, will be kept by the city clerk office and made available as needed. We clarified some election dates and processes, and that mainly had to do with some time limits that were in the charter that really don't work anymore. Because the city is pretty much bound by the Jackson County Election Board on timelines for when to get ballot language to them. And so it wasn't really accurate. So we worked and we reworded that so that it will comply with their rules and requirements. For candidates filing to run for office, we changed it back to candidates submitting their petitions that they have walked door-to-door to get, spent a lot of time doing that. If they show up on the first day of filing with those petitions, their order on the ballot is going to be randomly chose. And so that is going to eliminate hopefully camping out in front of the City Hall on the first day of filing. And it seems to be more fair also. Any nominating petitions that come in the day after that will be, just be added to the ballot in order of the ones that are received. Another change that we made was, in, in the charter language, it used the word if a candidate is incompetent. We believe that incompetent is a legal definition. And so we added that they need to be declared incompetent by a court of law. We added that candidates must be current on all fees and taxes to the city and shall not have unresolved warrants. And we also clarified the referendum process and timeline. We didn't make any substantive changes to that. We just tried to make the language a little clearer. And we clarified that franchises and utilities are subject to state laws. Question five amends Articles Eleven, Twelve, and Fourteen. It removes certain provisions relating to special assessments for public improvement. I think some of these were either not needed in the charter or were basically duplicative and probably should be in, in either state law or the code of ordinances. We removed certain provisions relating to the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment in favor of similar provisions that are already in state law and future placement in the city code. And I reviewed state statutes on planning and zoning boards and board of, boards of adjustment, and they are pretty detailed. So they pretty much, the state statutes pretty much set out how those two boards can operate. They even have rules of procedure in them. So putting them in the charter is really of no use at all. But you can still develop some additional rules of procedure if the council wants to do that. Also, and these are, this will come up later in some of the comments that have come out in opposition to these changes are that people, some people believe that we're taking rights away from the Planning Commission. We are not. That's already set out, like I said, in the city statutes. And I just want to add, having worked as a city attorney for many years, that decisions made by planning commissions are, there's not a whole lot of criteria, I mean, a whole lot of discretion. There's certain levels of discretion made by them. They have to follow the city's code of ordinances. They have to follow state laws. And they have to make their decisions based on criteria that are given to them by the city staff. It's not, you know, I get to vote if I hate, you know, a certain type of housing. Just because I hate it doesn't mean I, I have to, I'm going to vote against it. You still have to follow the code and the state law on that. So I want to, I just want to make that clear that it's, that removing that Planning Commission information doesn't take anything away from the requirements and the rules of those two boards and commissions. We took out the subpoena power. From what we understand, they're not used, they're not necessary. But if they are, they can be added into the code of ordinances. And we clarified that meetings, records, accounts, and votes shall be open to the public as required by state law. Of course, that's under the Sunshine Law, which the city has to follow. Okay, I'm done with the description of the five questions. Before I go any further, I, I just want to make a note, because I, I think I watched this meeting or was here when the council discussed this. And that is that I think we would have liked to have provided more information to the voters when they go to the polls to vote about the changes that they're voting on. But the election board would not allow us to post or provide a copy of the proposed changes, which would have been helpful. So because they wouldn't allow that, the council, the city staff put the everything available on its website and encouraged people to look at that. And I still encourage people to look at that and let the city know if you have any questions about the wording of the ballot questions. Okay, anything else you want to? I wasn't involved in it.
Uh, no, you are accurate. That was our, that was what we wanted to do, was provide copies of the full redline changes, have those available at polling places. The election board wouldn't allow that. They considered that to be electioneering. And obviously they take, you know, that, that's, that's what they're there for. And they made, that, that's up to them. They run our elections. And so when we found out that that wasn't going to be an option, we've done everything we can. Now, that doesn't mean that someone couldn't take a copy in with them, right? We've, that's online. We've had copies here and other times throughout different meetings. So someone could certainly take a copy with them, but we, we, we are, the city wasn't allowed to provide them. So we've done our best to, to put out the information out there and, and make it as transparent as we could what, what the proposed changes are. Thank you.
And again, if anyone has any questions that they can't get answered by looking at all the documents that are online, please email the city. Would you give that email address again?
It's citycharter@indeatmo.gov.
Okay, thank you. All right, now I'm going to start on some.
Dot org, I'm sorry.
Dot org?
Dot org.
And, and we'll try to answer those. I, I wouldn't mind looking at some of those if, if I'm able to answer them. It certainly would help with that. Okay. Now I'm going to talk about some of the opposition claims that have been made. I haven't seen all of these. I don't look at them all on social media, and I have not watched every single meeting. But I know we've had some really involved citizens come and speak at the council, and they are passionate about some problems they see with this. And so some of these claims we wanted to address tonight. And so first one is the Charter Commission had eleven months to do this work. Citizens only got two months to review it. Well, we were appointed, like I said, in 2022 in an open city council meeting that is published, noticed up, open to the public. Anyone could be here. And every single Charter Review Commission meeting was noticed, was open to the public, and was livestreamed and is still available on YouTube. I know there were some audio issues with some of our first meetings. But again, if you got questions about it, please let us know. We'd be happy to talk about it. But we feel like there was plenty of notice to the public. And we, so I don't believe that this, I don't believe the citizens only got two months to review it. The Charter Commission were appointed by the mayor and the city council during a public meeting. The commission held twenty meetings. I presented at the council on January eighth, twenty-four at a public meeting. And the city council had several meetings discussing this and spent a lot of time on it, in-depth time. And those dates are set out on this PowerPoint, but they started on February eighth and ended on April fifteenth, which was the second reading of the ballot ordinance. And that time was set by the election board. You had to get the ballot language to them. Our charter protects our rights, freedoms, and liberties. There are many instances where they remove the rights of the people. These amendments remove our voice, our vote, and our rights. The city charter, even though sometimes I may compare it to a constitution, it is not a constitution. not a constitution. The purpose of the charter is not to establish rights. Those are given to every citizen of the United States and the state of Missouri by the U.S. Constitution Bill of Rights and the Missouri Constitution Bill of Rights. Now, some of the, the items we include in the charter may seem like rights, but technically I don't believe they are. The city is required to follow all state and federal laws. The proposed revisions to the charter do not change that requirement and all of these revisions that we are proposing must be approved by the voters and that is required by the Missouri Constitution. The constitution, Missouri constitution requires amendments to go to the citizens and the ones we have proposed give more, more information and more to the citizens. For example, we've added the requirement that the citizens must vote if there's going to be a sale of utilities. That wasn't in there before. We are making it easier to access notices and meetings. We want to make sure they're all on the website. And in our inclusion, in, in the first article, we want to make sure that we broaden the people that have the ability to participate in city government and we want to reach out to those people. Our codified rights and protections are being deleted. Each question takes something from the people. Well, each question may take something from the charter, but I don't believe it takes anything from the people. And I don't know if the word codified is correct, but it's, it's not a code. It's not the law. It's a charter. Many of the proposed revisions require that the public has a voice within the city government. Question one requires a public review of the charter at the minimum of every seven years. Question two requires the city to proactively engage with the public. Question three requires the people to vote on whether or not the city can sell a public utility. Question four clarifies that council districts shall be updated after every census, every decennial census. Question five clarifies that all meetings, records, and votes of the city council and city departments are open to the public as required by state law. What is being taken away from the charter and the intent to do that are unnecessary and outdated language. We are not taking away any rights or protections of the citizens. Next, if question one passes, all of the questions are moot points. I didn't draft the questions again, but each question stands on its own and each, each question must be approved by a majority of the voters for the revisions in that question to take effect. Mr. Culver, did you want to add anything to that?
I think you summarized it well.
Okay. Language requiring fair and equal treatment of every citizen is gone. That is not true. That, there was a heading of one of the sections in, in 5.2, used the words fair and equal treatment of every citizen. The proposed 5.2 adds fair and equal treatment to every citizen and it also adds the requirement that there be a code of ethics. This code of ethics, I strongly believe, will include fair and equal treatment of every citizen. That's part of a code of ethics. Additionally, I just want to say that state and federal laws prohibit discrimination. So that's not even necessarily anything that the charter would deal with, but those prohibitions have not been taken away by any charter changes. Okay, they classed us, classed us in Article One. The city will search out special people and give them special treatment. I'm not, I didn't really understand what this meant, but the purpose of adding what we did to question two is that the city treat public engagement as an integral part of effective and trusted governance. And so in effect, we want to make it easier and, and better for people to participate and be treated fairly by the city government. If passed, question two would require the city to engage with all people of the city, including those who are typically looked over or those who feel they don't have a voice within the city government. Question two removes the ethics portion of our charter. Well, didn't completely remove the ethics portion of the charter. There is still some very strong language about ethics in that. Again, it requires a code of ethics to be adopted and the recommendations that the Charter Review Commission made concerning ethics were coordinated with the mayor's council on ethics, I won't get the name right, but review. And so we were working with them. We believe they had a good document. There may be a few things that the council wants to change that. I know it hasn't been adopted yet, but I believe a good document will be adopted. I trust the council to do that. Question two proposes that the Board of Ethics role is clarified and that the city be required to provide the Board of Ethics an operating budget. And the city council must follow state laws regarding ethics, conflicts of interest, campaign finance, and finance disclosures. So no, ethics have not been removed from the charter, they've been made stronger. They demoted the mayor position to basically an employee. The mayor is no longer an elected official. So I had to read this several times to figure out what that meant and I think I did. But first I want to say that there were no changes made to the mayor's creation, powers, duties. There was some language added to clarify that the mayor can only declare a state of emergency in accordance with state law. That's really the only change that was made or is recommended to be made. The terms, qualifications, and the election are unchanged. The more I thought about this comment, I think it may refer to places where we struck the word mayor. And the reason we struck that word is because it was used, it was like mayor and council or council and mayor. The mayor is a part of the city council and we felt like that was redundant to have the mayor and council in all those places and that's why that word was removed, doesn't remove the mayor, removes that word. The city council removed themselves. Again, this is one I didn't understand completely, but that all the powers of the city are vested in an elected city council. The council is created, the number of council members and the terms, their creation are all unchanged. The city government is not changing. It is a council manager form of government. We are not changing that. We believe that's the best form of government. The city manager is left in. It is the only person left in our charter. I, again, another one I had to read a couple of times. I don't completely understand that, but I think it may refer to the only position left in our charter, but that's also not true because we have the seven council members, we have the mayor, mayor pro tempore, the internal auditor, the city clerk, any other personnel that's appointed directly by the council, the city manager, the police chief, fire chief, municipal judge, city prosecutor. Those are all still in the charter. The city manager position is enhanced by giving it the authority to run every single aspect of our life. Again, this is, the city is a council manager form of government. That did not change. None of the city manager's powers or duties are changed. And there are six primary duties listed, those remain in the charter. So I don't know if anyone has any idea what that referred to, but I'm going to move on if you don't. Yes?
Please proceed.
Thank you. Regarding the city manager, towards the end there, and thank you for the council to indulge me when I was doing so, because the committee did bring to the council recommending that there should be a five vote.
Right.
And I thought, I thought the government should have a four vote in order to hire or fire, or fire a city manager. No offense there, Zach, you're doing a great job, but I thought that threshold should have been lower. So that actually gives the city council a little bit more protection to, as, as we move forward with, with city manager position.
Thank you. And, and that is the way it is in the charter currently? Yeah, thanks. All power is left to one unelected bureaucrat, the city manager that no one voted for. Again, city manager, manager council form of government, but the city manager is, reports and is responsible directly to the council. Council hires and can terminate the city manager. So the city manager runs the city administratively, but he doesn't run our lives. This council can remove or suspend the city manager with or without cause by, like, like you said, council member, an affirmative vote of at least four members of the council. And then there's language on here of, of the, kind of the definition of a council manager for, form of government. And it is, it is subject to limitations imposed by the constitution and laws of the state of Missouri and the charter and all the powers of the city are vested in its The model city charter strongly advocates the city manager council form of government. They call it the three E's, which are effectiveness, efficiency, and economy, and that it promotes a capable governing body and a city manager accountable to the council. Our city managers are chosen because of their professional expertise and experience. This question removes the public utility regulatory agency for a public utility franchise such as Comcast, MGE, AT&amp;T, et cetera. The, and I think that must refer to the Missouri Public Service Commission, I'm not sure, but they do not regulate IPL, correct? Am I correct on that?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. They regulate investor-owned electric, steam, natural gas, water, and sewer companies. They have limited authority over telephone providers in the state. The city council will continue to set policy and adopt rates for IPL, water, and wastewater. State laws regulate private utility franchises. They're saying question four allows the potential to remove the city's public works department and send it to be controlled by the county. I didn't find that anywhere in any of the recommended amendments, so I'm not sure how to answer that. But Section 10.1 does give the city the power to establish, improve, acquire, construct, reconstruct, alter, repair, and maintain all public works or improvements. Proposed revisions to the charter do not contemplate the city's public works, will be controlled by the county. The public works department is now part of the municipal services department and as City Manager Walker said, that consolidation has saved the general fund approximately $1.5 Question five removes the input of the Planning Commission to prepare and recommend an official map of the city. This takes away citizens' input. Well, the city boundaries and council districts are not considered by the Planning Commission. And as I said earlier, the official map, the legal description of the city is, is not, it's a, it's a document that really cannot be changed other than by annexation, de-annexation, or detachment. So I don't, I, I don't understand the basis of this complaint. The Planning Commission prepares and approves the city's master plan to, which, under our proposals, will be renamed the comprehensive plan. And state law requires the Planning Commission to make recommendations for all zoning map amendments, which are considered at public meetings. The questions remove the rights that state law says cannot be removed by the charter. So the charter, changes to the charter amendments, creation of a charter, they are governed by the Missouri constitution. The statute, there is a real short statute, but it says governed by the Missouri constitution. So that is, that is the authorization for changes and amendments to the city charter. No law requires, not that constitution or state laws require the city to include any particular items in its charter. The Missouri constitution provides that the city has all the powers that any cities in Missouri have unless the charter limits those powers. And the purpose of charter cities is to allow the organization and powers of the city to be decided by the people. A summary statement and fiscal note are required and the city didn't include those in the questions. Mr. Culver, would you answer that?
Yes, ma'am. Summary statements and fiscal notes are required for statewide ballot initiatives. They're not required for city charter amendments unless that was in our charter as a requirement and it's not. So there is, the, the references that have been made to, to state law refer to statewide ballot issues, not city charter amendments.
Thank you. Changes to Section 15.2 will leave citizens-
I would add real quick, that, that said, obviously the, we have prepared a summary as well as a number of other documents to help people to better understand the, the proposed charter amendments, which are all available on the website and we've got copies here this evening. So none of those were required by, by any particular law, but we, but we did want to do that to help people better understand the proposed changes.
Thank you. Changes to Section 15.2 will leave citizens with vague questions. These questions are not amendments as required by state law. Another kind of confusing statement, because as I said, state law really doesn't govern charter and amendments, it's the Missouri constitution. Now, the wording of the questions, we've, we've talked about and if, if Mr. Walker, Mr. Culver want to discuss that further, I'm, I'm happy, I would be happy to hear you do that. The Charter Review Commission did not participate in drafting those questions, so I can't really speak to it. I will say that, like, like I said at the beginning, there was an attorney representing the city with vast city municipal government law knowledge at every single one of our meetings. We had two attorneys on our commission. We got outside legal help with the bonds work. So these were, every change was carefully reviewed and if, if any of us on the commission thought there was a legal question that needed to be looked at, we asked for it and we got it at, at the next meeting that we had. As far as the wording of the ballot questions, that was discussed by the council. I know I saw those meetings at length and you did what you had to do to get it on the August primary ballot, which is going to be a long ballot anyway. So again, I'll let, let city staff speak to that more detailed.
Well, I mean, as you all are aware, most, but not all of you were involved in that process as we were going along with drafting the ballot questions. Unfortunately, I mean, ideally, we would have every proposed change would be its own separate question to give everyone ultimate authority and the ability to, to pick and choose. That just wasn't practical. And so what we did was do the best we can to, to group them together in, you know, the goal was as, as few as questions as we could, but it still made sense. And that's where, how we ended up with the five, the five questions that we have, because obviously there's different parts of the charter that affect different, different articles and have references and that sort of thing. So when you change one part, it potentially has a ripple effect into other parts of the charter, so we had to take that into account. In the end, you know, with, with input from the council, we ended up on, on the five questions that are on the ballot. You know, we think that- You know, we think that, that makes sense and that does a good job. Those, they, as I was presented previously, those are standalone questions. So, you know, question one could, could fail and the other four could pass, or any combination thereof, and, and it all still works. That was done intentionally so that otherwise we, you know, if they were, if they were interconnected, then if one passed and one failed, that could potentially produce a conflict. So that's how, how the five questions were designed. I understand and certainly can see the, the criticism that it should have been more spread out into multiple questions. And that's, and I get that. In the end, we, we came up with what we thought would, would work the best and be able to have a ballot that, that voters could, could read and understand and, and absorb, you know, also considering there's a number of other questions and issues that are going to be in front of them on that ballot. And, and you know, and we just wanted to make sure everyone had, had the information in front of them the best they can, the best we could provide it to them.
Thank you. That ends my presentation. Are there any questions for me?
First off, just want to say thank you for your work, and, but we will allow for questions. Councilmember Stewart, I saw you leaned forward.
Yeah.
Do you want the microphone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Jackie, thank you for the time you spent on this, and all the other members that are here, thank you for taking the time for doing this. I know it was a kind of a tedious process at times. I didn't have a question, you said there was two attorneys on the committee, is that right? But not all of you were attorneys, I mean, there were probably other professions.
Two of the eleven.
I mean, you know, there was probably fire, retired firefighters maybe, you know, or retired postmasters, small business owners. It was a very, a very variety of people with occupations and backgrounds. And I had a question, you, I just want to bring, you kind of touched on the city boundaries earlier. They were, you said they were outdated from 1975, is that right?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so we probably did some annexations since then, correct?
I'm sure.
It's probably possible.
I worked on one of them.
I mean, I mean, I know that-
I'm over here nodding, I realize people can't hear the marble rolling around in their heads. Yes, the answer is yes.
I know that, like, there's some people that have Blue Springs addresses, maybe even one on the committee, and so there's some Buckner addresses that have probably been annexed over the years into the committees, so it really doesn't make a lot of sense to me to have those in there. I was talking about that because that's one of the big questions that I've had. Our city changes and our boundaries change, and they could still change to this day. I mean, there's a subdivision in my district that could very easily be brought into our city and wouldn't be, you know, included in it. So you may not know they have, you can, you may not be able to answer this question completely, but did any member of the city council, either current or present, contact you or maybe any other member of this committee while you were working to give any influence on it, or? No?
No. Not, not about the actual charter.
Okay. So you didn't, you didn't feel like you received any influence from the city?
None, none.
The city council, they kind of stayed out of it?
Absolutely.
Okay, because I know at one point, I, because I watched a lot of the meetings, I disagreed with something, and I was like, that close to contacting the person I put on there, and I didn't do it. I was like, you know, it really does, and the mayor kept saying this during the thing, it needs to be a citizens' committee. And, and I wanted to just leave it like that. And I was like, you know, at the end of the day, I'm on the council and I'll have my say, but let them do their work. So let me, something, ask you a question. So in your opinion, I know you talked about the city manager position a lot, does this, does the revised charter that's proposed, does it give the city manager any more power than he currently ha, or the position currently have?
Not that I can think of.
Mr. Covert, would you agree with that?
Yes, I'd agree with that.
So the city manager still reports to the city council, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Very much so.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay, I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Further questions? Anyone else? But I know we've got a number of members of the, of the commission here that spent hours and hours and hours on that. Mr. Frakes, do you want to make a statement, or? Absolutely, come all the way around and-
Bruce Frakes, 14509 East 44th Street, South in Independence. I think after hearing this here, my comment would be, or concerns is, I think somebody might be misleading some of those questions that were so far off base as the question you asked about the powers of the city manager. If somebody took the actual time to read the current charter and lined up what's submitted, there's a lot of condensing. It's basically the same thing. There's not any part of it that readdresses how anything, any function, any department, or anything runs. It's condensed from, they said 60 pages to close to 30. And it takes out a lot of redundancies. But I think that if somebody's trying to submarine this or insinuate that it's rushed or trying to sway something in there too quickly, I would say, look at the videos. They're still there for pub, public viewing. We were there every other Tuesday for almost a little over a year. Everybody was involved and did a lot of work on it. And it's certainly the intent to improve or bring it up into the age that we are. Electronics, I think, is about the biggest change is in there, other than condensing some language to see to it that it works. But to verify the citizen, true citizen, for me, a truck driver, to a college professor, there were a couple of attorneys on that committee, a couple of small business owners. And it was the, it was true citizens that, that had the honor to be able to do it, take everything into consideration, great help from the city manager and the city council and Chairman Summers did an awesome job. But there's certainly not any change that would drastically, that didn't have anything to do with how the city's going to run. It maybe reassigned some HR scenarios, but that, that's the scenario here. And I was reading some of those as the chairman was putting them up there, and was a little taken aback by, there's not any right taken away. None, nothing extra to the city manager, nothing less. A little consolidated language and a lot of hard work, and if anybody has any questions, put the two documents together. You'll see the part that was struck that we might condense down, and it'll explain exactly what we did and left the exact way that everything operates right together in there. So that's an easy comparison before somebody might listen to some negative comments. I couldn't think of a reason why somebody would be doing that. I think that if, if somebody's listening to the negative side, kind of, kind of look at where that's coming from and try to figure out why, but make your own informed decision. Sometimes people make decisions based on headlines or hearsay. Read, read what the committee put together, and you'll be, understand that it is a good piece of work, and it certainly needs to be brought up from 40, 40 years ago.
If anybody has any questions, hurry. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anyone else other further comments on council? Mr. City Manager, any closing comments from your perspective?
Again, this information is all on the city's website. If you navigate to indepthmo.org, the top banner references the August 6th city issues. Click on that link, and you can see all the documents that have been referenced here tonight, as well as the information you'll hear shortly about Proposition PD. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And there is a question, I know probably, on where are we at with the ethics? And we've worked on that, we've had the ethics commissions work on that, they've brought it to us. We've had a couple of meetings on it, and we've kind of let it set what our goal is now. I just recently met with the chair of that committee, Larry Blick, Alan Gardner, who is the, was the city attorney for the city of Independence. He's also on that commission, we met last week. Alan Gardner, myself, we're going to meet with Lindsay, we're going to set a date up on that, and I would like to get, bring it up to the council, either the last, last study session of August, or possibly that first study session in September, so the council can go through it again, cross their Ts, dot their Is, and have that process. That's how we're kind of working on that. And then it's how long it takes us as a group to get to that perspective. But our goal is to make it more robust than what it was in the charter, and to have more requirements than what the charter has. You know, one of the things that, and I know all of you know this, what's very, very important to me was campaign contributions. There are no campaign limits for city council. So you could literally get a check for $100,000 from one person, and you could receive that, and you could, you would in fact be legal, and you'd be, you know, accepted by the charter. I find that to be, I'm trying to use a softer word, but I just don't like that. That may be fair. But, but anyway, we, those would be some of the things we're working on, but also some more accountability for city staff also included in there. So there's a number of things that, that the commission did recommend. And I know Christina, you were on that commission, you're here this evening, and, and we'll get that process started again. But if there's any questions on that, I'm happy to address that, please.
This is not a question on the ethics document. It's really what happens next. So let's assume that the five questions pass. There are items in there that require the city to delineate aspects inside of code, and just what should the average citizen expect? Will they come forward as a group? Will they come forward a bit at a time?
That, that's our next topic on the agenda tonight. If you, are you all ready to move on to that?
Perfect.
Okay. In that case, yeah, so this is, the, the, the title on the agenda is ordinances to update the city code, and that's, and that is where this would come. If, you know, to the extent these are, were approved by the voters, based on the, the work session that the council had back in February, the direction was that, you know, we didn't want to, to wait until the, the ballot questions had been voted on to start working on the ordinances to effectuate those changes in the city code. So my office has been doing that over the last couple of months. Those are, are getting finalized now, we're getting ready to send them out for review by the leadership team. So here's, here's what could happen, and this is, this is the discussion for tonight, is I'd like input from you all on how you'd like to see that. So the election is August 6th. The, after that, we have a, August 19th would be the next council meeting, okay? The packet would be published for that on August 9th. So between, so after August 6th, we would know which of the questions were, you know, were approved. Then we have ordinances ready to go based on each question. So each, each question is a standalone ordinance. It makes a number of different changes, but it's, each question is a, is a standalone ordinance. And so if all five questions were approved, there would be five, or five different ordinances in front of you to effectuate those changes throughout the city code. You know, if, if only, you know, if question one didn't get approved, and two, three, and four, and five did, then just those ordinances would come before you. So the earliest we could do that would be for the, the August 19th council meeting would be a first reading. So what we could do is on August 6th, after the election, even though the election wouldn't be certified yet, we would have the results at that point, we would know which questions had been approved, we would include those ordinances in your packet for the August 19th meeting, that would go out on August 9th. Then we could, if you wanted, we could have this as an agenda item on the August 12th study session, so that we could not, you know, go through them if you want. Again, there's, there's a lot of potential changes to code. We could either go through them or just take questions, depending on, you know, what, what you all want to see. That would then, those would have a first reading on August 19th, and then would have a second reading on September 3rd. So approximately, so to the extent the ballot questions were approved by voters, we could have the, the code changes done approximately a month later. Does that answer your questions? Is, is there any additions or anything you'd like to see differently with that timeline?
I'm out on September 3rd. So I don't know.
You, you all tell, I mean, it, I, I, what I wanted to give you was, this is the quickest it could happen.
Right.
Right? Without, without special meetings, just based on the, you know, based on when the election is, and based on your regular, you know, meeting schedule, this is the fastest that we could take the, you know, account for the changes and put them, the charter currently says that, you know, that the changes go into effect in the charter immediately, right? So, but we can't immediately put it all into the code. The, the most we could do was have those, have that ready to go for you all to consider when and if it became appropriate based on, on the election. And so this is the fastest it could happen, based on your meeting schedule, would be first reading on August 19th, second reading on September 3rd.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Is there any risk to the city in delaying that by two weeks if we needed to have additional discussion, or if there were areas that needed to be modified?
No, it, it, it could be delayed. I mean, again, the charter changes go into effect immediately in terms of the charter. So yet, the, obviously, there's going to be a certain amount of time where, where information that is intended to go into the code isn't in the code. So we, we know that, this, that was a part of reviewing, I mean, that was, it's going to be a part of this process. The, the only way to, to sort of try to avoid that would have been for you all to, to prematurely adopt those code revisions, assuming that the charter changes were going to be approved. And, and for obvious reasons, that didn't seem like the best course of action. So we knew there was going to be a gap there, so I mean, it, you know, it, whether it's a few weeks or six weeks, that's, that's up to you all.
Please proceed.
I suppose the other thing we could do is we could have a special meeting to address those five, or however many items.
You could. This, this schedule is based on your regular meeting schedule.
Anyone else other further discussion? Okay. Thank you very much, and we've got Proposition PD, is that next?
Yes, again, similar to the charter conversation, Proposition PD is on the August 6th ballot. One more opportunity to provide some education and information about that issue, so here is Chief of Police Adam Dustman to share that information with the council.
Welcome, Chief.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. While hopefully, equally as important, I can promise you that we will not be here this long for the Proposition PD summary. So again, just to go a high-level overview of what was presented to us, how we got here, and then solution that was a lot of work by the council and the city management, and, and so what we're putting before the voters, so that they are informed. Again, I've said this before, but I, I wanted to reiterate the deep appreciation of the police department, myself, my staff, on, to both the entire council who met, as you will see many times, as you all are familiar with this, and addressing this challenge that was kind of thrust upon us, as well as City Manager Zach Walker, Assistant City Manager Lisa Reynolds, and various other members that we relied upon between HR and, and payroll to put this together. So without going into gross detail for you, basically, the story goes, as about March, we started hearing rumors that the Kansas City, Missouri Police Department, who at that time were approaching a 400-person vacancy within their sworn personnel. Again, to give you some context, Independence is currently authorized at 230. Kansas City, Missouri Police Department is currently authorized at 1,700. So again, they, they had made operational changes to kind of deal with the vacancies due to budgetary constraints, recruitment and retention challenges that all of us have faced across this profession over the past several years. And it finally came to a critical mass for them. We started hearing these rumors in March, and, and we kind of, we're going to wait and see. Wait and see what that impact would have, knowing that a lot of times, no different than any other city, with a little caveat that they're state-controlled, that budgets and other things are, are the predominant driving factor. So in April, we learned that they did in fact approve a substantial wage scale adjustment to the members of the Kansas City, Missouri Police Department, namely that they would start a police officer out at $65,000, and, and in an eight-year period, they would reach and progress through their wage scale to top end at just north of $104,000. To give you and the citizens at home, the comparison for us, we were starting in the high 40s, so you're talking about a $20,000 difference between starting police officer in Independence and starting police officer in Kansas City. A great pause as the chief of police for one reason, more so than, than others. We are a relatively young department, and I don't mean that in necessarily age, but more in tenure. And we have gone- tenure. And we have gone through some attrition and turnover in our department over the past several years that have really seen a, a turnover and an influx of new employees to the police department. What that does is that in the retirement system or the pension system, the vesting period for our employees is five years. So to have a department primarily composed or, or a large substantial portion composed of those that are under five years, it really doesn't give you a whole lot of, of leverage and loyalty and staying power to retain those employees when they can go to the neighboring jurisdiction and make $20,000 instantaneously. And with a four-year lateral, could make even more than that. So I'm trying to be a little cagey in that I don't want to make this a recruiting video for the Kansas City, Missouri Police Department. So I'm gonna, I'm just, I'm just putting that out there. However, we'll be happy to take any of their personnel over here anytime. So, so that posed a, a significant problem. The other piece of that is that we are a younger in age department, which you, you think about the new financial strains of a young family, children, new home, trying to, you know, affordability there, inflationary pressures and rising costs. Again, when you're faced with making those kinds of decisions and you can go just to the west to do the exact same job and make that kind of money, what in the world is keeping you here? So again, that, that happened pretty rapidly. That went into effect on the 28th of April. I happened to be down at the State Police Chiefs Conference at the time. And as you can imagine, as I shared with the council, that, that created quite the discussion amongst the state police chiefs around the breakfast table. And so there was some immediate reaction to what do we do? On, on the way home, I called and filled in the city manager. And actually upon my first conversation with him that morning, I learned that we had five additional personnel, good solid police officers that were doing what is considered a ride along with the Kansas City, Missouri Police Department. And so as I shared with the council and I've shared with citizen groups, police officers don't go ride along with another police department just for, to learn the job. We do it every day. We do it and, and live it. So they're doing that for one reason and one reason only, and that is prospective employment. So that, that's a, a pretty significant challenge. When we are already sitting with 35 vacancies, to lose five, and these five additional personnel, no doubt are the kind and caliber of officers that would take other officers with them just by nature of who they were. If you compound that with the, the, I'm sorry, I went too, went one too far. So if you compound that with the difference of what we were looking at as far as what Kansas City's announcement, which garnered 22 certified applicants, and I've said before, the difference between a certified and a non-certified is that seven and a half month gap of going to the police academy. Whereas a certified officer, somebody that would come from another Missouri post-certified department can make an immediate impact. They go through that same 14-week, sometimes even expedited from their FTO or field training program, and then they are on their own making an immediate impact in our community. So Kansas City, Missouri, Missouri Police Department had shared with our hiring and background investigator that they had the 22 certified applicants just from the anticipation of the announcement. And then in the three-day period since it went into effect until I got back in the city on May the 1st, they garnered 44 additional certified applicants, which the wisely, the Kansas City, Missouri Police employee would neither confirm nor deny included members of the Independence, Missouri Police Department. So you compound that with the five that we knew that were riding along, suddenly this becomes very urgent and dire. Again, I am not by nature an alarmist. I am very much a dig in and solve a problem. But this very truly, as I said to you, is what kept me up at night. This is, we, we are at critical mass within the, the Independence, Missouri Police Department, given the expectation of the service that we provide to our community, that we're very proud to provide to this community. We are pretty much at bare bones to be able to continue that level of service. So if we were to start losing, you know, 10, 12 officers, we would have no choice but to reduce services in, in some form or fashion. So whether that's calls for service, whether that is units, you know, similar to what the Kansas City, Missouri Police Department was forced to do, functions, some, some hard and tough decisions would need to be made. So wisely, the city manager felt like this was urgent enough. It needed to be brought to the council's attention. Graciously, you all came in and met. I was home long enough to shower, change clothes and become presentable to come up here and meet. We met several times through the weekend, going over facts and figures and, and really after digesting the problem, it was immediately, okay, we know what the problem is. We know what we need to do. Now how do we get there? How do we solve them? So after our weekend, again, started on May the 1st, May the 6th, through the council's wisdom, it was decided that this effort to match Kansas City was, was not financially feasible. That would cost us somewhere on the whole of about six to 10 million dollars. So it was, how do we get as close to Kansas City as we possibly can to not only retain who we have now, but attract and recruit good commissioned officers to our city? That proposal was the, the wage scale that was upgraded. So we start out at $62,000 and we top out at the end of this four-year agreement with the FOP, actually higher than Kansas City at 105. So you can make more money at the Independence, Missouri Police Department. I'm switching this to an Independence recruiting video here as we speak. And the, we reduced that wage scale from what was 20 years to progress through to top out to 16. So very, very favorable in that regard. Additionally, what was negotiated in is that we added back in the protections, which is a benefit that neither, no other municipality around here can say that they have, which is the health and retiree medical benefit for 55 to 65. Again, without getting too much into the weeds, due to the, the nature of the demands of their jobs, public safety employees, both police and fire, and some detention officers and dispatchers are able to retire at 55 years of age with full retirement, whereas the other non-public safety employees as their designated first responders are not eligible until age 60. So we were able to protect that health insurance benefit. And I will tell you that we proposed that to, that, that change to our peer city counterparts and unanimously, they said we can't afford to do that. So that is a lucrative benefit for us to be able to recruit in. And, and as you will see or have seen the media coverage that was there, we swore in our first group of five commissioned, all commissioned police officers last Wednesday. That was all since this went into effect. So it does have an effect and it is having an effect. I, I think it will largely, I think probably there are some that are waiting to see how this plays out before they, just to make sure that it is sustainable, before they would make their final decision. But I will tell you that we have had interest from multiple city departments and we just commissioned our first from out of state. She was from Texas. So we are getting the word out there. So again, I kind of hinted a little bit is how do we sustain this going forward? Again, through the city manager's office and the council, we were able to pull together for this fiscal year, one-time usage. A lot of those are the American Rescue Plan dollars that, again, just to, to let the citizens know, those have to be allocated and programmed in this fiscal year. So they had to be used anyway. We were able to go forward and, and program those to sustain this package in year one. However, we don't have that lift to the tune of, of three to five million dollars next year. So the city is obligated to this. They've agreed to the, the wage scale with the FOP. So I was recently asked when I was presenting to the Chamber of Commerce is what happens if this measure does not pass? And that would be, again, we're right back to that tough decisions and, and just very candidly, that's going to come with a cut in personnel. There's no other places for us to be able to cut within the police department budget to come up with this mechanism. So again, the citizen, or the council have put forth this measure, Proposition PD, which is a quarter cent sales tax that will be on the ballot on August the 6th unless or until repealed by the voters. It is average, or estimated that this will bring in about 5.4 million dollars a year. And again, we'll get into here in just a second, the cost of that. It is 25 cents out of every hundred dollars. So flip a quarter and there you go. So that, that is the overall cost of this that will sustain this and keep certified officers here, recruit, attract and retain very talented officers to come and work in our wonderful city. So I kind of hit all of this again, five cents for every $20 spent or a quarter for every hundred dollars spent. Again, this has been highlighted before. I don't know that it is up there, but one of the important things to mention is that about 40% of our sales tax are paid by non-independence residents. So that's a, it's not just on the backs of independence residents, but that's also a fair measure because non-independence residents come in here and are, are consumers of our services as far as the police department. So just wanted to throw that out there for the citizens' benefit. Again, quarter of every penny spent, five cents for every 20 or 25 cents for every 100. You'll see there at the bottom, there's that 40% measure that, that come from non-residents and 5.47 million dollars is what it is estimated to bring in. The biggest criticism or question, I don't know that I call it criticism. It's a, it's a good question and there is some misinformation. So I wanted to take time to clear this up that we've heard is that there's anywhere, I've heard anywhere from seven to 10 to unknown amounts of, of tax initiatives that support the police department already. Again, fair question, good question. So it's important to educate a little bit. So initially, we had the longstanding public safety sales tax, which is both police and fire. There's a quarter cent there. However, that tax initiative, as you will see, the public safety sales tax, which is overseen by a citizen-led public safety oversight, sales tax oversight committee, which actually oversees all of these. So it's the same group looking at all those expenses and revenues coming in and weighing those out. That is for equipment only. So very largely, as you can imagine, this has gone through several, several iterations over the years. However, cost of vehicles have gone up, no different than when you go to the car dealer, you know, when we buy those vehicles. The cost of equipment inside of the vehicles, lights, technology, all those things have gone up. The cost of computer and other things, there is no salaries or benefits whatsoever that comes from the public safety sales tax. It is all, all equipment-driven, largely the radio system that we have, our Motorola contracts, which are multiple millions of dollars a year. Part of this was the Axon contract that was the vendor that was selected to update and modernize our technology platforms, which we, the citizens have seen. We've rolled out our body cameras. Tomorrow starts our in-car fleet upgrade. So we are really on our way. That's this, this funding that, that provides that, but no salaries and benefits. After that was, we got into the, the need for additional police officers. We had not updated our staffing appreciably since the 1960s. So in 2019, the voters approved Proposition P, which was not only us, but the animal shelter, and that was the use tax. So you hear those used interchangeably. Again, that was to hire 30 additional officers. It also supplemented up to $750,000 to the animal shelter. That still is in, in place today. However, in 2021, it was overproducing. And so as such, it was in good wisdom that we went back to the voters and asked them to expand that to outside of that additional 30 officers to allow us to do equipment, not salary and benefits, but equipment, and then supplement the salaries for the wage, for the negotiations for the FOP. That was retention bonuses, all of the hiring bonuses, the $10,000 hiring bonuses that were in there that we put out to try to recruit. Those were from the Proposition P. Some other things that came out of that expansion, the cost of ammunition went up overnight almost, much like other things during and post-COVID pandemic. We spent $80,000 over what our budget was just on regular department ammunition in 2022, 2023. So that was an overnight hike post-COVID and supply chain through those economic drivers. So we were able to, we had to, to adjust to that. That comes out of there. And then most recently, we were able to update through, again, a surplus that we had or, or the unassigned fund balance through good, good financial stewardship. We were able to update the mobile command center. That's a 20-year asset. And combination between Prop P and the PST, we were able to update our armored vehicle this fiscal year. So the Bearcat that is long overdue and has some, some bullet round marks on her. So we were able to get that done as well. So again, all equipment and then with the additional salary and benefits for Proposition P, but that is, that's capped where it is now, would not allow for this expansion. Then came the marijuana sales tax. Unlike a normal quarter or eighth cent, I guess I should note that Proposition P is an eighth cent, so, so different from, from the public safety sales tax. Marijuana sales tax is a 3% just on the sales of recreational marijuana from the dispensaries that are here within the confines of the city, of which there are four. That is generated to, or estimated to bring in about $900,000. And that was all infrastructure-driven. As that was this council, you all are intimately familiar with that. But that is first and foremost to be used for the new justice center design and infrastructure needs to, to get that project off the ground. That will be followed up by another geobahn discussion that, that we've clearly been having multiple times over the past year. But that is, that's the marijuana sales tax. So that is the three taxing initiatives that support the police department. Again, the only one of which for, for wages, which are tapped at those 30 officers is, is the use tax, which leaves us to Proposition P. So that's what you have before you. That is all I have for you, but I would be happy to take any questions that the council may hear or have, or if you've heard. I know several of you have been out engaging with our community. So if you're hearing other things that I'm able to clear up or, or address, I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Anyone else other questions? Please proceed.
So Prop PD can be used for salaries, but it can be used to cover all the costs that come with that. So when we increase salaries, that means we increase loggers' contributions. All of those can be paid for with these dollars so that we don't have any more loss of general fund.
Correct.
Just, I've had that question. I just want to clarify. Thank you.
Wages and benefits, fringe benefits included, social security, Medicare, all those costs.
Thank you. Anyone else other comments, concerns? All right. Thank you, Chief, very much. Appreciate it. Mr. City Manager, anything else to follow up on?
No, thank you for the indulgence tonight.
Thank you very much. With that being said, we will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.